Let's get the meeting started. It is, uh, one thirty-two, and today is the meeting of the zoning board of adjustments. It's Monday, July the tenth, twenty twenty-three, and it's, again, it's one thirty-two. And, uh, do we have the previous minutes? We do. And does anybody need to talk about them? Not, let's have a motion for approval or not approval?
I'll send a motion.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes from Monday, the June fifth of twenty twenty-three are approved. Now we go, that was item number two. We go to item number three. ZBA twenty-three dash zero nine B, sixty-six ten Clarice Court. I'll read into the minutes, a request for approval of a variance from section four oh two point eight, point two of the zoning ordinance to allow a six-foot rear setback in lieu of the required twenty-foot setback within the single-family residence RS one zoning district. And Ms. Sherry, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure everyone recognizes this piece of property. This was on the agenda last month. We came down to placement of the building on the lot, and the applicant was needing to have a variance, a fourteen-foot variance from the backyard. After discussing it back and forth, it was decided that he did need to come in, and so he did apply for that, and we are taking it forward. And so you can see it is the same forty by fifty-foot, uh, building that we had last time. We slid it over. It's five foot from the side property line. That does reflect the six-foot variance that he is asking for. And if we look at the pictures that he did provide us, and I appreciate that, on your left, you will see that that is where the new pool, misspelled, I apologize, the pool site, um, is located. It's not finished, and it does not have the decking in totally as of yet. The middle, uh, shot does reflect that area that he still has some build-out, and it's hard to see, but the tree on the left is the tree within that center landscape area that he was wanting to be able to keep. And then the, uh, shot from, taken on the right was standing at where he would place the building, and shows that he has the room that he does need if he's granted the variance. And he'll move, of course, the, uh, the, the play area, and he's going to have to move some of the rocks a little bit, but he thinks everything will fit in that area. Uh, we did send out notices again to the surrounding property owners, and we had two people who did uh, send back notices. They, they were recommending the approval of the request and did not have any problem with it. And while we're looking at it, I just want to remind you that the building to the rear of this lot is that large commercial building, and he parks his, uh, large equipment then between that building and the back of, uh, the applicant's home area lot. Again, this is his home. That is the access that he will be using, and he will construct a, a driveway back to that accessory structure. And we're looking at it, uh, basically that, uh, he is desiring to have an accessory structure closer to the rear lot line than that is allowed. He's looked at it, and he feels that with the heavy commercial lot, um, owner parking his equipment there, that he's not impacting anything upon that piece of property. And, and in fact, this will help block some of the visibility of that owner's large equipment. He feels that literal interpretation would keep him from having something that others in the area have been allowed to have, and he's correct on that. Remind you of the first one that you did approve. Um, he said it would also benefit his family and the neighborhood since they are so far out. And again, this action is the minimum, and that meets the needs and does not adversely affect others. In granting the variance, we believe that is consistent with the zoning purposes and intent of the zoning code. And we are using the literal enforcement on this one. And staff is recommending approval of the request to allow for fourteen-foot variance from the rear lot line. Um, and that is closer than that allowed by the ordinance, which is the twenty-foot. And are there any questions?
Any questions for Sherry?
I do. Um, so
Yes.
the back of, so I'm remotely, the back of the structure and the fence, what's the gap between the fence and the structure on the back side?
It'll be six feet.
Six feet?
Mm-hmm.
And then on the side, it's five feet?
Five foot.
On the side, okay.
Any more questions? This is the applicant here? Okay, I didn't see anything. Okay, question. I guess we'll go to public comment then, Sherry. Thank you. Public comment?
Uh, the only thing-
Just state your name, please, sir.
Name is Michael Kratzer. Uh, I'm the owner of the house at sixty-six ten Clarice Court. Um, the only thing different from what she said, on the five-foot side, I'm actually going six foot, so it's not, uh, it's well within the variance on the side. There's no variance needed for the side, just the back. And other than that, I think we talked mostly about this the last time I was here, and I don't see anything I need to add.
So you're okay with, um, is that Erica back there? Hi, Erica. Are you, are you with, okay. You say you're okay for, on a future sale, that you won't be encroaching anywhere? On anything, this will, the way this laid out, you know, when you go to sell one of these days, maybe you'll live there forever. One of these days, you'll sell the property, and they'll have to go out and get a survey. You, you're gonna need to make sure that you meet what this permit's allowing you to do, or you're gonna run into some problems there.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You understand that? Okay. I think that's, I think that's what brought this up last time at the end, thinking about future selling of your property and being encroached. All right. If you're okay with it, I'm okay with it. Let's talk to, let's ask the staff here, I mean, board here, if they're wanna have any questions. Y'all have any questions for?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Uh, let's see, any comments on the motion? Anybody? All right, there being none. I need a second.
I'll second.
Two seconds?
Yes.
Two seconds equals four.
One first, two seconds.
Four. Okay.
We're good.
All right, let's have the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes six, zero. All right, next item, number four. ZBA twenty-three dash twelve, twenty-three eighty-nine Fisherman's Road. A request to allow for a front yard setback of eleven feet rather than the required twenty-five feet within the single-family residence RS one zoning district located at twenty-three eighty-six Fisherman's Road. Sherry, again, hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know. Um, you will notice that we have both twenty-three eighty-nine and we have twenty-three eighty-six there. Because, um, in one place it is twenty-three eighty-nine, um, on, in another place it is twenty-three eighty-six. And this is not the first time we have found that around the lake, and, but we use both addresses in this case. The applicant has requested, as you indicated, uh, to be able to take an attached garage construction to eleven feet within his front property line. I'd like to point out the uniqueness about his piece of property out there on the lake. It is the one in red. You'll see right in front of that that there is an easement. That easement connects them out to Fisherman's Road. Their address is off of Fisherman's Road. There's also, um, another access off of Rock Slough Road. They come in off of Rock Slough. Uh, other applicants in the past, the one next to them, and then the one next to him, uh, both come in and they use the, uh, one of them uses the Rock Slough approach, the other one uses the, uh, secondary approach off of Fisherman's Road. The reason I bring that up is that, uh, in the house right next to the applicant in two thousand and eleven, he requested permission to build a, an accessory structure into that easement, and he was granted the variance to build a structure into the easement, so he is actually blocking that easement. But he, he felt that that would be all right because in nineteen ninety-nine, the person next to him, um, who takes his access off of Fisherman's Road on that side access, had built his garage and then another structure into that easement, and he also got a variance to do that. So the applicant is, in this case, requesting eleven foot from the front property line. He's not even crossing that front easement line, which is unique. And then there's about two hundred feet of city-owned property before you actually get to Fisherman's Road. He is not wanting to cross easement. He just wants to go within eleven feet of that front property line of his lot. Um, and this is a closer picture of that, so you'll get a, a feeling for the entire area up there. We mailed out seven notifications. We did not receive either, any either for or against. This is a picture on the left is the applicant's property, and you'll see where that concrete slab is. That slab actually goes to within eleven feet of his property line, and that concrete ribbon that you see is his property line. So you can see what that eleven-foot area looks like. Um, and the property on the right in that picture is actually the, uh, accessory structure and then the carport that are built in that easement area. And looking at this, we felt that, uh, this area has grown up. It's come under the city of San Angeles, but there are a number of city standards that were not met before, or even variances have been given because of the uniqueness of the lake. In this case, we felt that the applicant, uh, does not receive any direct access from Fisherman's Road, what he's asking for, uh, seemed like a reasonable application and is in keeping with, uh, other variances that have been granted or is actually better than some of the other variances that have been granted. Uh, the applicant believes that granting the variance will allow him to have the same enhancements to his home that other neighborhood, uh, members enjoy, and the action is the minimum that will meet the needs and does not adversely affect others. And in granting the variance, we believe that it is consistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, we're using literal enforcement as the allowed variance in this case. And staff is recommending approval of the request to allow for a street setback of eleven feet in lieu of the required twenty-five-foot setback in order to accommodate the construction of the home enhancement comparable to others in the area. And with that, are there any questions?
Questions for Sherry? Now, we're building over an easement, correct?
Pardon?
No.
Yeah, not this one.
Not this one? Okay.
Next one.
So just a right-of-way easement or a utility easement? Who, who built over the easement?
Next door.
Next door, okay, 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 all right.
Then the two next-door people, yes, have both built into the easement area.
Okay. Any questions? Any public comment? None? There being none? Sherry, thank you. Next on your public comment. Erica, you're not gonna get a public comment? You don't wanna talk? Get up here. Yeah, call me, just say approve it, right? Yeah, just approve it. Board comments? There being none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion.
A second.
A second.
There we go. We got a motion to approve in two seconds. Again, four motions to approve. Let's have the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Six, zero. Thank you. Thank you whoever. Erica, thank you. Sherry, thank you. All right, moving on to item number five. Roman numerals, I'm doing well. ZBA twenty-three dash fifteen, twenty-seven oh two, twenty-seven oh six, twenty-seven ten, twenty-seven fourteen Lindell Avenue. A request for approval of a variance from section five oh one point A of the zoning ordinance to allow for a ten-foot rear setback for our exist, for four existing lots on Lindell Avenue. Hi, Sherry.
Hi. Um, this is an application, as you indicated, for a ten-foot variance, rear yard variance for placement of a home. Um, this, these four lots received, uh, the admin variance back in twenty nineteen. So they are forty-seven and a half feet wide, just about forty-seven and a half feet wide by a hundred feet. At the time that the applicant got the variance, we talked to him about what kind of house can go on there and what the setbacks are, et cetera. And the applicant understood and, and agreed with us. However, the building environment has changed a little bit, and he is wanting to build a home. He has one home design, and he's going to replicate it for all four with some minor variance changes to it. He's wanting to put that same house on those four lots essentially. And because of the design of the house, where it has a, an attached front yard that ex, or a garage that extends to the front, and he had to meet the twenty-five-foot front yard setback. And then if, in a minute, I will show you the site plan, the rear of his house, there's a portion of it that will extend into that ten feet. It does not cover the entire rear yard, uh, setback, and we do recommend a condition, and I'll go over that in just a moment. His other approach was the fact that the house that originally sold the land for the plating of those four lots is set quite a ways back. It's thirty feet from the rear of all of these home lots. And so he felt that allowing them to have a lesser rear yard would not impact that owner at all. This is the plat that was approved in twenty nineteen. You can see that that back lot, uh, nineteen A has a flag lot approach now and sold off that front area. We sent out twenty-two notifications. We received zero in favor, but there was one against. When asked, that person just said that she was against it, and she has the home that's across the street. Most of the homes that, in that area, are larger, older homes. They come in about eighteen hundred square feet, nineteen hundred square feet, and that, the applicant is wanting to build an eighteen hundred square foot home. This is the, uh, site plan for that home. As you can see, the front yard setback is the twenty-five feet. And then you can see how the rear of the home is staggered for, uh, a porch area and then an, an extension of the home. And it's that portion in the back that extends for just about a little less than half of the rear yard that he is being set back into that, um, twenty-foot setback, and that's the area that he's requesting the variance for. Excuse me. Staff is asking for a condition that would limit the, uh, if you approve this setback, that would limit it to this kind of situation so that the entire, um, rear yard setback would not be covered by a home, but, uh, a half of it. We are looking, again, the front yard is the twenty-five foot. The applicant wants to build an eighteen hundred square foot home, which he believes is compatible with those homes around. The variance, if granted, would allow the use of the land. We do not believe that as contrary to the public interest. And would it be in keeping with the zoning ordinance and the separation from the person into the rear? And that, uh, we believe that granting the variance would not have an adverse effect on the adjacent land. Again, granting the variance will be generally consistent, generally consistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, we're using literal enforcement. And staff is recommending that he be allowed to, uh, encroach into that rear yard and receive a ten-foot rear yard set, uh, setback for that portion of the home, the half that fits in that rear yard, but he keeps the rest, um, as it is. And with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Sherry? I have one. What would the required setback be on this lot? Twenty?
It would be twenty, yes.
So we're taking four lots and just gonna make one lot out of it, basically? Put, put the house on, no?
No. He, on each one of those lots, that's why all four of the addresses are listed. He's replicating that house on each one of those lots, so each one of those would have a variance.
So this is, so, okay, okay. I, I, when I, when you first started, I thought I heard you say it was building his own personal house. Own the lot, nineteen A? Okay, that's gonna be his. Well, okay. I see, okay.
So this is actually four variances.
Okay, okay, I got you. Um, is there, so there's a home on nineteen A already?
Yes, sir. It was built back in about nineteen twenty-something.
Yeah, I was around, I remember.
Yeah. You do?
Well, how far-
I would believe that, Don.
How far is the home, the nineteen twenty-eight home away from the, uh, back or their side property line? Is, how close to it?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go back to the
Yes.
site plan?
Do what? That one?
Mm-hmm. Is there a covered porch on this? Is that what the-
That middle, yeah.
So-
So how, how much of the house is actually only the ten feet? Cause it's not the whole house.
Right.
That corner, that row.
It's just that rear piece, yes.
Right. I can't see it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's like three feet.
It's just this portion of the house that actually is extended into the ten feet. By the time we get to here, it is back far enough.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So if you approve it with the variance, that, nothing else of the house can go back?
Right, except for what he's requested, yes.
That limits the homeowners to ever put anything else, like extending a covered patio, anything like that, correct?
They would have to come forward and request a variance on their own, yes.
Oh, okay. So they could still have that opportunity?
They could still. That would be up to this board.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out, Sherry, what, what is, what is the difference between RS one and RS two?
RS two is single-family and two-family. It allows duplexes. Generally, a duplex has a larger lot, a small, uh, oh, sixty-five-foot, um, width on the lot compared to the fifty.
These are RS twos, and the other ones, catty corner, are RS ones.
Uh, yes.
That doesn't prohibit this from being a single-family house?
No, no, it does not. It could, you can have single-family or two-family in RS two.
There's really no difference between the two and one. I was doing, I was reading, trying to figure out in the, in the books what the, the one and the two meant.
Yeah.
I honestly couldn't see a difference.
Well, the two gives you the option of doing a duplex, right? Where the one, you can't.
Right, and the single-family, you can only do a single-family lot, yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I wanna ask this historical question about this offset. Like, Julie said, there's only a certain amount of encroaching. My recall from years ago, there used to be a way, uh, that since there was only a little portion of that house encroaching, that you could do a percentage calculation where they wouldn't have to go through this. The twenty wasn't the drop-dead point.
It is over the ten, it, over the admin amount.
Now, that was a long time ago, so I'm sure things have changed. Maybe John can address that if he remembers.
It's still the same, but that percentage you can go into a yard and get administrative approval is only ten percent, and this exceeds that. They're, they're going farther into the setback.
Farther than ten percent?
Correct.
Okay, okay. You're refreshing my memory, and I, running, I run into that on some of my stuff, and I often wonder. Good if I couldn't remember. And anytime I call engineers, they won't send me a bill. What are you shaking your head for? That's playing, I'm just kidding. And that's it.
Like, I wouldn't be here.
The check's in the mail, by the way. The check's in the mail, yeah, from nineteen seventy-nine. Didn't get there yet, huh? Okay. All right, let's see. Uh, okay, I don't, any more questions? All right. Miss Stephanie, you're, I'd say your brain-
I'm adding, and I'm not- Thirty-two, forty-seven, and twenty-five, that's a hundred?
Oh.
Is my math-
Forty-eight by a hundred and fifty.
Or seven and a half by one hundred, that's what the lot is. I'm adding your sides up.
You're adding up at the top.
So there's thirty-two and then forty-seven, right?
He measured to that back session, section of the house.
Which is ten foot, one half inch.
Okay.
And the middle section is forty-eight, eleven and a half inches, and then forty. So it is a hundred foot by forty-seven and a half.
Yes.
Okay.
Good? Any more questions? You good? Call for a motion?
Public comment?
Oh, public comment, excuse me. Thank you. Please state your name, ma'am. Please state your name.
Erica, E-R-I-C-A, Wilde.
Got the I L B here.
Not to be confused with wild, it's Wilde, yes.
I always wondered.
Yes. Ah, what she said, I just would ask that y'all would approve as presented. Thanks.
Well, I'm not, I'm not through asking questions now that you stepped up.
I knew, I knew.
No, I'm not gonna do. I, I, my, my question is, why then just pull more land off that?
Yeah, that, that would've been, uh, hard.
Yeah. What if you, I don't know what's beside it, but could they actually go for a twenty-foot front setback, John? To get more?
They, they could've.
Cause that, on the plat, it's not showing a setback, it's not showing a building line at all. Is it? At least mine isn't. Where? No, that's, I mean, on this. It's not showing a building line at all. I didn't know if there was one there or not, but it's not showing one. I didn't know if there was one there or not, but it's not showing one.
Yeah, keep it a point. If you, if you add up the bottom line on the plat...
I'm sorry, I'm back to this.
It's, it's 100 foot.
The top is not.
But if you add up the top line, it's 104 feet.
It's 100, it's supposed to be 100.
Supposed to be 100?
So, which measurement is off? Does the house go back farther?
The house only goes back. It's 10 foot from that rear property line.
No, not the, I'm talking about the top measurement. So, if you're looking at the top, 32 and, 32 feet, 7 inches, that's the backyard, which is what we're talking about, right? Plus 47 and 1/2, plus 25 is not 100 feet.
I don't wanna speak for him, but my guess is, he did it very quickly and mislabeled it.
There were some last-minute revisions that, and some...
Most pieces, the bottom adds up.
So, it's not, so, my only concern is the, the house, what we're looking at, the house isn't gonna go farther into that 32, and it's really not 32. It's, you know, that's all I was trying to figure out.
Even if, even if that was the number that was incorrect, i-if you take that difference, what did you say, it was 104 total? If you took four feet off of that, it would still be within, not within the setback.
Okay.
That'd make it like 28, so...
Which, yeah, would still be like one foot over that 10.
I would like to make a motion to accept as presented.
I'll second it.
Call for a motion.
Motion to accept as presented.
There was a motion to accept, and I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we all ready for the vote, or we need to talk about it anymore? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none? Six, zero passes. All right. Good catch, by the way. Looks like I probably, we could read in glasses. All right, we are on item number six, the division report.
Just have, again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services, just announcement. Zach Rainbow, our planning manager, has, has left the city. He's resigned, and so we'll be looking for a new planning manager, but...
He was the manager?
Yeah, he was the manager of the planning division. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, item number seven, public comment. Issues or concerns tonight on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dice, and begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. How long am I supposed to pause before I move on?
I'll make a motion, then you move on.
Make a motion, we have to have a vote. We'll take, all in favor, say. Okay. Item number eight, next meeting agenda. The next regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, August 7th, in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room. Mezzanine or Mezzanine or Mezzanine?
Mezzanine.
Mezzanine?
Mezzanine.
Mezzanine?
We're in Texas.
All right. Did everybody get that? Do we have any, anything on the agenda?
We have one.
One? Okay. August 7th?
Okay, two.
Two? Okay. Keeping us busy. All right. All right, item number seven, adjournment. Let's see, we gotta go, we gotta vote on that, don't we?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Ah, motion to adjourn. Ah, have a second, and a third, and a fourth, and a fifth, and a sixth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.